To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with dignity and justice for all.
Thank you. The first order of business is the approval of the agenda. Are there any additions, additions, changes to the agenda? Hearing none, a motion would be in order to approve the agenda.
I make the motion.
Motion by Jim, second.
I'll second.
Goodbye Eric. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passes by unanimously. General public, so we have a lot of public here this evening. I will call your names and if you wish to speak when I call your name, please spell your last name for the recorder and identify the school if you're speaking from a school, which you're speaking from. It's important that everyone else have their mics turned off. This is a big meeting and so for everyone to hear. The first one I have is April Morse. Do you wish to speak, April?
No, I'm all set. Thank you.
Marsha Turner.
I'm all set. Thank you, Lisa.
Christine Kieber.
Yes, I would like to speak. I am from Polton High School. I actually was going to speak with Dawn Farley. Would it be possible for her to go first?
For who to go first?
Dawn Farley.
Okay, I mean, I'm just calling you in order that we have you signed in, so.
I didn't, this is Dawn Farley here. I didn't hear my number called.
Maybe join later. What's your last few numbers?
Of my, of my cellphone is 1-6-1-3.
Okay, I'll put you down.
All right. Are you ready for me?
So you're speaking, who's speaking now? I mean, I'm trying to have some semblance of order here.
Sure, this is Dawn Farley. Last name S-A-R-L-I and I'm from Polton High School.
Okay, let's keep in mind also that we have a very full agenda. We're doing our first draft of budgets this evening, so keep our comments on point, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. I teach middle school language arts at Polton High School. This is my 13th year teaching in this district and I love my job. Not only do I teach in this SU, I am also a parent of a second grade grader at Polton Elementary. I come to you with the concerns of both a parent and an educator. As I'm sure many of you are aware, right before schools closed last year, we were scheduled for an in-service on March 19th and 20th. As a result of this closure during that in-service, some of what I learned included how to create a Google Classroom, how to add students and invite students to a Google Classroom, how to record a video with a screen flipped so my students could read it, how to record and do voiceover for slideshow presentations, how to upload videos to the classroom, how to facilitate a Socratic seminar with students through Google Meet, and how to create an assignment using Google Forms. When I left the school building for the final time in March, I was unsure of what the future held, but I was also so surprised at how much I had learned in such a short time. I remember telling Principal DeBonis that I undoubtedly learned more during this in-service than any other in-service before. Since then, in order to accommodate remote learners, I have learned how to better use Google Classroom, how to create a Screencastify, how to use Jamboard, how to use and record a Google Meet, how to use Kami, how to use EdPuzzle to insert formative assessments into videos, how to use Dino to make sure students aren't in fact working on the assignments they are supposed to. I must admit that learning all of this new technology is exciting, but it is also very wearing. And remember, this is specific to a remote learner model. This is not to mention the students I'm teaching in my classroom. Everything about my job has changed, from reminding students to keep their mask up and over their nose, to wrapping up my class early so that the desk can be wiped and sanitized, to cleaning food off my classroom floor after lunch, to not being able to comfortably approach students one-on-one in class, to wearing heated gloves to combat the cold air blowing in my room, to et cetera, et cetera. The list goes on and on. Everything has changed. I still do love my job. With that being said, when this began, I didn't realize that the hardest part of this would be the emotional impact. I didn't realize how tiring it would be to teach students through a screen. I hadn't given enough credit to the amount of, the amount of students who learn solely based on relationships in person. I didn't realize how hard it would be to hear a veteran teacher who I respected and admire, who I respect and admire, say that she was so tired that she didn't know if she could continue. I wasn't prepared to stand six feet away while my colleague broke down and sobbed over the extreme amount of stress that she is under. In order to gain a better understanding of how things are going from educators in the GRCSU, we recently set out a survey to all GSCSU teachers and received 71 heartfelt responses. The results were representative from all buildings, with 21% from West Rutland, 18% from Polton High, 15% from Wells Village School, 14% from Proctor, 13% from Rutland Town, 10% from Polton Elementary, 9% from Middletown. My colleagues and I would like to take a minute to share a few representative narratives from some of our GRCSU colleagues. And with that, I'm gonna pass. Thanks.
And this is Christina Kerber. One colleague writes, "It has been overwhelming and difficult to do both remote learning and in-person teaching at the same time. I do not feel like I'm providing an equitable experience for my remote and in-person learners. I am spending twice the amount of time planning as I was last year. I am exhausted and it's only October." Another colleague writes, "It is double the work. I'm trying to make everything for the remote students as my goal, but it takes a lot of time. It's also a lot more grading as there isn't an opportunity to just take a quick dipstick test to see if kids are understanding. I find that I'm making a lot of activities with the same content so I can really reach all learners."
Hi, my name is Jenna Lloyd. I work at Polton Elementary and I'm here to share two other narratives from teachers. It has been a struggle. The time has certainly been doubled on the teaching and planning side of things. It does not matter if you have only one remote learner or 10. It still requires double the amount of work and planning. It also takes away from the learners in the classroom as you try to accommodate for all of them. Bouncing between the cameras and the class is so very challenging. Sometimes technology doesn't work and then the frustration arises among remote learners and their parents. Then we waste time trying to fix tech, trying to fix tech issues and again, take away from time for those in the class. We have become smoother, yet many, if not all, of the teachers are starting to feel like it is May, when in reality, we are only eight weeks into school. It's a ton of work, creating documents, transferring each of these to Kami, uploading those into Google Classroom, and grading all of those online sheets using Kami. It's just so much. I can't imagine when we are going to have to plan, we are going to have time to plan if and when we ever go back to a five-full-day schedule. Wednesdays have been a lifesaver. Every free moment, my partner and I are planning to assure everyone is experiencing the same academic experiences. At times, that still does not feel like there is enough time in the day to prepare for both in-class and remote. Another colleague writes, "It's very difficult to do both at the same time. I love virtual Wednesdays because everyone gets the same instruction. On other days, I feel as if I cannot give my remote students what they need and what they deserve. It is so difficult and unfair to everyone in this situation to expect me to do both at once."
Hi, this is Abby Etori. I have the last two accounts that we wanted to share today. I work at Rutland Town School, so these are two more teacher narratives. One teacher writes, "It is extremely difficult to teach the online students and the in-person students at the same time. The materials that online students need to be successful are completely different than those for in-person. I can't show them what they are doing wrong on paper. They can't see what is on the board or anything I write because I have to use my laptop front-facing camera and everything is backwards. I have had online students tell me that it's too hard to learn when they aren't here and we aren't teaching a whole class together. The online students are getting the short end of the stick with our attention divided and their achievement is showing up." Lastly, another colleague writes, "This is so difficult. It is time-consuming and then to have not, to have not many students complete work or attend Google Meet is so frustrating. To do both remote learning and in-person is so hard for classroom teachers and also for specials teachers who see many students each day. I am happy to learn new technology, but there's not enough time in the day to focus on what matters most, our students." Thank you.
This is Dawn Farley and I just want to close with some closing remarks. We came here this evening to ask that as we move forward with plans in this ever-changing reality, as long as educators are being asked to teach in-person and remote students, we desperately need to keep Wednesdays fully remote. Teachers are struggling. We are grateful for the attempts that have been made to provide us with technology and training that we need to be successful, but we need you to know that we are struggling. We are all working more hours than we ever have and we are tired. We are willing to work with administrators and the school board to implement plans that best support students, families, and teachers, but we need your help. We are drowning. Thank you for your time and consideration."
Thank you. Amanda Williams.
I don't have anything I would like to say, but during roll call, you missed Bridget Tarbell and she has something that she would like to say.
Great, I'll add her in. Katie Scanonova.
No, I don't have anything to say.
Okay. Peggy Thomas. Joy.
I don't have anything to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Erin, Erin?
I'm just here to listen. Thank you.
Alyssa Hutchins.
I don't have anything to say. Thank you.
Amy, Amy Torrey.
Just listening. Thank you.
Brenda Fort.
Just listening. Thank you.
Ethan Cameron. And I'm not going to butcher your last name.
Beau Powell and I'm just listening as well.
Thank you. Kayla Puljazek.
Hi, yeah, I'm, I'm just here to support the other teachers. My experience is the same as what they've expressed. I think we just are saying that we would like to keep remote Wednesdays, but ideally have remote teachers whenever, you know, as soon as possible is the idea.
Thank you. Larissa Roy.
I'm all set. Thank you.
Lisa Dayton.
Hi, thank you. My last name is D-A-Y-T-O-N and I'm a parent at Rutland Town. I am here tonight to voice my opposition to a remote learning academy. I won't go into details, but we have chosen the remote learning option for our daughter. She has asthma and it's very out of control when she gets sick. Choosing the remote learning option was not a decision we took lightly. We very much understand the academic challenges and social barriers that remote learning entails. However, this is the best option for our family right now. Remote learning is not easy for teachers and as an educator, I understand this. What I need you to know is that it is also very difficult for our children. My daughter's teacher is so incredibly organized and so skilled in her ability to juggle both remote and in-person learners and we are forever grateful for her efforts. She has created a learning environment that is working for my daughter. She now knows the classroom routines and the classroom expectations. She is able to navigate the digital world of Google Classroom and knows how her teacher wants assignments turned in. We have systems and schedules in place at home to support all of this. My daughter has made connections with her teacher and with her classmates. Connections. As educators, we spend the first part of the school year always building relationships and building connections. We often teach our students about growth mindset and what it means to have grit when things get difficult. It's one thing to talk about this, but it is an entirely different thing to demonstrate it. As educators, our students don't often get a chance to see us struggle with something new, but what a wonderful opportunity we have been given. This pandemic has been so incredibly hard and right now, we have the chance to demonstrate some grit, to demonstrate what it looks like when we stumble and what it looks like to get back up and carry on. But instead, a remote academy is being proposed for January. Students are never switched out of a class halfway through a school year, yet here we are, proposing to do this to an entire group of students. This sends the message to our remote learners that they are not important, that it was just too hard, that the connections that they have worked so hard to make, the work that they have put in doesn't matter. You are showing them that when it gets hard, you throw in the towel, you blame someone else, in this case, children, and you carry on with what you are good at. What a horrible message to send and what a missed opportunity to truly show what it means to rise up to a challenge. For a school district that is trying to focus on social-emotional learning this year, this is certainly not the thing to do. I am very concerned about the emotional impact this would have on our students. As a parent, this remote academy proposal in the middle of a school year makes me incredibly sad and as an educator, I am profoundly disappointed. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Lisa, you're muted again.
Sorry, it mutes me automatically because the group is so big. Tammy White.
I'm all set. Thank you.
Trista Mattson.
I'm all set. Thank you.
Dawn Tarball. Dawn Tarball. Is there anyone I missed who wants to speak?
It was Bridget Tarbell, not Dawn. Some thinking she may not realize it's her.
I'm sorry. I have her underneath Dawn Farley. Too many names. I'm sorry. Bridget. Bridget, are you with us? Have I missed anyone who wishes to speak?
I would like to speak.
Okay.
My name is Laney Sinclair. My last name's S-I-N-C-L-A-I-R.
Okay.
I did not plan a script. Lisa perfectly spoke about my concerns as well. My family had decided to go with the homeschooling route this summer. I spoke at the school board meeting in favor of our teachers. I really, our teachers were incredible last year. I can't thank them enough. With what was going on, the restrictions in the school, we had decided the best thing for our child was to, both of our children, was to either do remote, if they offered it, which was what we were hoping, or homeschool. We were in the process of homeschooling because after the school board meeting, I was given the impression that remote would not be an option. So we did all the research, we put in all our materials, and I was contacting the school to make sure I was getting the right curriculum. When I was informed that we would be offered remote for the entirety of the year, I asked them specifically. I said, "Is this going to be for the entirety of the year or is there a possibility of this ending?" Because I don't want my child to be starting school and have it cut off at some point and us be in a bad position. And I was told, "No, this is for the entirety of the year." Now, my son is going to school and as Lisa says, these children get set up with their teachers, their classmates, they form these relationships. We know our schools, we know our teachers, and now all of a sudden in November, we're getting something where we, we have to decide whether to put them in an academic academy with somebody we don't know. My understanding is we are low-mand on teachers right now. So who's going to teach this academic academy? We don't have enough teachers to do what we need right now. We don't have the substitutes. So you're going to put them in an academy with who? With what kind of standards? With what kind of background for teaching are you expecting to put them in? How much is that going to be detrimental to them later on? It's in the middle of the school year. You're going to do it in January, so they're going to have to re-establish them with themselves with a new classroom. I, I think that's, that's a horrible thing to do them. My, my son is an IEP. It took us the first few weeks to coordinate the IEP classes in conjunction with his regular classes so they don't conflict. How does that work if you put him in an academic academy? How do we know based off of the grading system, which I know the teachers, the parents, and the students all don't feel comfortable with and is not a standard that's set for all schools? It's subjective. You're going to put them under somebody else who's different, that can be a totally different grading standard. It's a totally different way of learning and then they're supposed to go back to their original school the following year. What happens with COVID right now? We see COVID coming closer and closer to us. We have other schools that are closing. They're less than an hour away because of COVID in those schools. If you put them in the remote academy and then all of a sudden, COVID hits the schools and you have to close the schools and you send those kids to remote, what are you going to do then? Are you going to take my kid out of the remote academy and bring them back into remote with their friends and their teacher that they started off with beginning of the year and disrupt their year again? Or are you going to keep the students that are in that class separated in these two remote institutions? I, I just think it's a horrible idea and I think it's horrible that it was sprung in the, in the, in the middle of the, the school year. If that was something that needed to be done or thought of, it should have been done at the very beginning so that the kids could have established themselves and kept a routine throughout the year. This is basically the effect of pulling somebody out of school and making them move into an entirely different school and we know that is not going to produce great effects.
Thank you. Bridget, are you with us? All right, I'm not seeing any other names that I haven't called, so thank you all very much for sharing with us and we'll be moving on, going down our agenda. Thank you for joining.
Lisa, can we ask questions, please?
We will, we can address this after executive, or, and have a response after executive session if you'd like.
So if I have a question for somebody that spoke tonight or somebody who didn't speak tonight, I have, they have to stay through the meeting so I can address them all the way at the end of the meeting? Is that what you're saying? That's fine. I just want clarification.
The, the practice of general public comments is to come and allow the public to speak and to defer action to future meetings.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not asking for action. I'm asking, I have a clarifying question that I would like to pose, but if I can't get to the end, then that's fine. I just want to know.
All right. Yes, ask the clarifying question. We're 30 minutes into the meeting and we've approved the agenda.
Yes, I just want to clarify and maybe just have maybe Dawn or Christina or whoever folks first speak to this on behalf of everybody. So the, I, the, what I feel like I hear you all saying, this is Kristen Ross, by the way, my, my camera's off right now for bandwidth. So I just want to make sure that you all are requesting that Wednesday, stay remote is what I'm hearing and that the other thing I'm also hearing though is you'd like some teachers to be designated as remote only to have students who are, you know, so, so teachers don't have to be both doing remote at the same time as doing in-person teaching. But what I'm hearing from parents is that a remote academy quote unquote, that might be something we contract out, is not what you're thinking about in terms of the teachers. You're thinking of the staff that we already have, teachers we already have, some of those folks would be remote is what you're asking.
I think we're asking to maintain the teachers in the classrooms we have right now because our kids are in those classrooms right now. That's what I, I'm asking for. I want to keep the continuity. You break up that continuity, you're, my son works on routine, you completely screw up his routine, it's going to have an effect on his learning. It's also, different teachers teach different ways. He's with his teacher he is with right now. We know what to do. And I'm a very active parent. I am with him all day long, both him and my daughter. I am jumping between three computers. I am doing college classes. My children are in classes and I am working with them on their stuff. So I don't let, I don't expect any of the teachers to provide the same type of services that they do typically in the classroom. You tell me what you need me to do and I've got your back. You teach the new lesson to them and I've got your back. And we send in the material and we work hard to do it. It's hard for us too on this end, but this is what we thought was the best interest of our children.
Okay, thank you. Any other teacher, staff person want to follow up with that or is that, is that, is my summary of that clear, clarifying?
I think your summary is clarifying. I think we find it very hard to do both and we're struggling. We've, we brought that to the superintendent very early on. We felt some of the time that we might have been left out of the process where our vote, our, our opinion may have mattered. And so yes, it is very difficult for us and those Wednesdays for a lot of us have been a lifesaver because we have the time to plan with our partners because a lot of us are planning more than a week in advance to get our remote learner stuff ready. I mean, let's not remember, let's not forget that some of us just got our computers and our kids aren't taking them home yet because we don't have cases. I mean, there's been a lot of obstacles, so yes.
Okay, thanks Jenna. Thanks everybody for coming.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right, moving on to the consent agenda. You have minutes from September 23rd. A motion would be in order for approval.
Motion.
Motion by Jim, second.
Kristen Ross, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion passes. Approval of warrants. You receive the warrants in your email as per policy. If you have any questions about them, you should contact Central Officer Lewis saying that a motion would be in order to approve the warrants.
I'll make that motion.
Annette, second.
Second.
Second by Jim. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Superintendent's report. Motion passes. Superintendent's report.
I'll keep this relatively brief, uh, since I've spoken to each of you in our individual districts. But there are a few things, uh, I do want to address. Uh, first, on October twenty-third, uh, the A O E and Department of Health did release an updated version of Strong and Healthy Starts. Uh, we met with the admin team this week to kind of review that. Uh, we will be making all appropriate, uh, changes by November sixteenth, which is the date that was given to us. Uh, there weren't too many, uh, changes for us, but they're just things for us to consider as we move into the winter season. Uh, there are a couple of things about holiday travel. Uh, we do know that as we move into Thanksgiving and, you know, closer winter break, that, uh, for all of us, not just for, you know, the staff here, but, uh, you know, the holidays will look a little bit differently. Uh, so as of right now, we cannot restrict, you know, we're going to ask to restrict, uh, travel. But we're asking families and staff just to continue to make good decisions and continue to salt the uh, travel websites and understand that if people do travel to a red or yellow, they will need to quarantine. Um, I know that there has been some discussion or there have been some rumors floating around around the state about extending, uh, the length of, uh, holiday breaks or this, that. Uh, we have not heard anything official on that. So as of right now, uh, the holiday breaks will still stay as, as is. Uh, we also have concerns about staffing. There's something which we talked about as we move into the, uh, you know, the colder season that, uh, is we have staff absences. Uh, you know, when we had flu season and we have individuals who need to quarantine for a variety of reasons. Uh, I just want to just, you know, inform the board that there may be a time in which we will have to close a school down for a day, uh, you know, and move them to remote learning uh, because we do not have adequate number of staff. Uh, so we will be developing plans. We'll be getting out to the public about that. But just a heads up that that may occur. There's something which we anticipated doing back in July. I think all schools are, are currently, uh, you know, having the same issue. Just there aren't a lot of subs out there. We just to make sure that we can safely operate our schools. And if we are at a point where we can't, uh, then we do need to move to a fuller remote. Uh, I know that some of the teachers have been asking or you heard some of the, you know, passionate, uh, responses tonight. But, uh, we, my recommendation will be that we will be, continue with our current model through at least the end of, uh, the second quarter, which is, uh, the end of January, which is our four-day, uh, in-person remotes, which will still keep Wednesdays. Uh, there has been some discuss, there has been discussion. I think there, uh, I've heard some of their, their staff as well as our community members speak. Uh, we have not made a decision in terms of what remote learning will look like moving into quarter three or quarter four. Uh, we do know that we will have a remote learning, uh, you know, for the rest of the year. Uh, but as we're exploring what the different possibilities are, that, uh, there are a variety of things, but our current model is one of our options. So, you know, so we're not looking necessarily to change. We're just looking at what's going to be best for students. But if there is a change, we will let people know, but there will be no change at all. So, uh, but I understand where people are at, but like I said, we are just currently reviewing our plan and looking to see, make sure that we are doing what is necessary for both students and staff. So, uh, and some upcoming events. I know that there is discussion of on Election Day, there are two schools, uh, Proctor High School and Rutland Town School that will be moving to full remote on those days. Uh, that is just solely done because those two sites are used as polling places. Uh, the rest of the schools will be normal operation. Uh, but I said that those, you know, those two buildings will be closed. Parent teaching conferences will be November twelfth and thirteenth. Uh, they'll have an early dismissal for both those days. Uh, we are allowing teachers to, you know, to work, uh, to operate remotely on those two days uh, to handle the conferences. So it should be to get more information for your schools about that. And then Thanksgiving break obviously is coming up on November twenty-fifth and twenty-seventh. And as I said before, we're just asking people to make, uh, good decisions around travel, uh, just to avoid quarantine.
Great, thank you. Any questions for Chris? Hearing none, uh, we'll move on to Lisa Mattson, Assistant Superintendent Report.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, I know you have a printed copy of my report. Um, the only new item I wanted to add was, um, we were approached by the Agency of Education for the Proctor Schools, um, in the uh, school improvement grant work that we're doing with them, that there may be some additional funding from the Agency of Education, um, that was not used by other schools in prior fiscal years. Um, so we've been working with the Proctor teams around, um, what we might be able to do to take advantage of funding. Again, it's, it's similar to Title One. It has to be used for the same kind of purposes as our C F P funding and the same types of activities, uh, that we can do. But we're going to see a, a quick, quick deadline, but we're going to, we're going to try and take advantage of that as well. Um, but other than that, I didn't have anything new since my report. I'm happy to take any questions if anyone has any.
Any questions for Lisa? Thank you, Lisa. Hearing none, we'll move to personnel. We have resignations in your pocket. Uh, Lindsay Etterson, West, uh, Rutland Para, Suzanne Carpenter, Polton High School Special Education Teacher, Erica Zimmer, uh, S U P B L Coach, and Gregory McGoldrick, uh, Rutland Town Para. A motion would be in order to accept those four resignations.
I'll make that motion, Lisa.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Second by Eric. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes. Contract recommendations, support staff. Nicole, uh, Wells Village Para and Kevin Proctor High School Building Maintenance Substitute. A motion would be in order for those two, for support staff. Any questions?
I'll make the motion, Lisa.
Second?
Second.
Second by Jim. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Motion passes. Without, um, objection from the board, the next two extracurricular and non-union, non-administration and supervisory contracts, if we could move those to executive session. Hearing no objection, we'll hold those for executive session. Uh, you have a list of vacancies in your packet. Chris, is there anything you'd like to speak to about vacancies?
Not at this time, no.
All right. Uh, moving on to finance. Louis?
Good evening, everyone. All right, so in the packet you have a, a written report, um, which we'll go over before we move into budget. Uh, so three items to discuss. The first one is the copier lease. Uh, we have a cop, two different copier leases, uh, one for the former Rutland Southwest Schools and one for the former Rutland Central Schools. And we have not been able to, to combine those leases at this point because the, the timeframes are too far apart. So we've been working on, um, as we renew them, trying to get them closer and closer. Uh, this should be the final renewal, uh, which will get us, uh, closer to that point where the next one will be able to combine them into one lease. Uh, so we're looking to replace copiers in West Rutland, Proctor, Rutland Town and the S U Office. Uh, we're looking at replacing the current machines with new machines that are comparable to what we have now. And the lease will run for, it's a five-year lease. It'll run through two thousand twenty-five. And it will result in approximately four hundred and five dollars in savings per month. That'll be spread across, uh, those, uh, three schools or those three towns and the S U Office. Uh, so I am looking for action on this, um, with an approval.
Do you want these separate, Louis, or can we do both copiers at once? Or both?
Uh, so just one copier lease at this time. The Rutland South, the, the, the lease that covers the former Rutland Southwest Schools doesn't expire to two thousand twenty-four.
Okay, I'll make the motion. Okay, I'll make the motion that we replace the copiers for Rutland Town, West Rutland, Proctor. It's on the contract.
Second by Jim. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion passes. Next, Louis?
All right, the second item is just an update on the Summer Meals Program. Uh, so earlier this year, we reported that the USDA had extended the Summer Meals Program through December thirty-first. Uh, they have again extended that program now through the end of the school year or June thirtieth, whichever is first. Uh, the Summer Meals Program allows us to serve all children under eighteen at no cost. Um, so a- all students, whether they're in the school, homeschooled, remote, or even siblings of students, um, can eat both breakfast and lunch at no cost to the, to the family. So then that, this is great news. It's been extended to the year. Um, the good things about the Summer Meals Program, uh, it, uh, has a larger or a greater reimbursement rate. Um, so it does cover more of the cost of the meals. It, uh, increases the flexibility in the meal pattern. So it makes it easier for the, the school food service authorities to, um, serve meals. Um, and it also has more flexibility in the reporting of meals. Uh, we don't have to, we just need to count the meals. We don't need to record who's getting the meals. Um, so i- it's good news all around. And that's just an update. No action needed. And then the last thing is, uh, an update on the state financials. Uh, so we, we heard last week that the state deficit, it has been reduced. The estimate has been reduced to sixty-seven million. Uh, and that, uh, the tax, the, this, the Tax Commissioner usually gives his recommendation on December first on what the yield should be set at. Uh, the yield is what is one of the larger factors that determines local tax rates. Uh, and the legislators did, uh, report to the Tax Commissioner that he should not take into consideration that deficit in his recommendations for the yield. That the deficit will be, um, either handled down the road, um, or through other mechanisms. And, and not raise property taxes at this time. Any question, any questions on any of those items?
All right, can I just say, any of you that are on phone, and I can read your last numbers, but you need to mute yourself. I- it's giving terrible feedback. Several of you are open. Thank you. Okay, Louis?
Okay, so moving on to budget. Uh, so the, the budget, uh, budget was sent to the board members. It was separate separately from the rest of the packet. Uh, hopefully everybody has that in front of them. Uh, it is a twelve-page document. Uh, the budget is, is broken out into three different categories or segments. Uh, we have the general fund, special education and regular ed bill backs. Uh, so the first page is just a summary of changes. It's all those items that have changed from one year to the next, uh, from F Y twenty-one to F Y twenty-two. Uh, it just summarizes. Um, and we can, we'll go through those in more detail in a minute. We'll just go through the, each of the pages and then we'll come back. Uh, so, uh, page two is the assessment allocations. Uh, this is what determines how the budget gets broken down and assessed back to the local districts. Uh, so the first segment is general fund and that's based on A D M. Uh, we do use prior year A D M because we don't have current year A D M at the time that we finalize our budget. So the numbers that you see are for the nineteen-twenty school year. Our A D M did increase from, from the prior year, from eighteen thirty-two to eighteen fifty-eight. And then you can see the detail how your individual districts increased or decreased and how that affects your percentage of the assessment. Special Ed section is based on child count. And that child count is taken, uh, this is the official child count that's taken once a year. Uh, that increase, and we also use prior year child count for this, increased from two eighty-two to three fourteen. Um, and then you could also see that your percentages for each district. So even if the budget's flat for each, any one of these segments, but your percentage increased, you'll see an increase in your budget. Um, and, and vice versa. If you're, if your Hawaii P students decreased, if the budget's flat, you'll see a decrease in, in your assessment. And then the next, uh, list of the pages, uh, you'll see the, the general budget and the special ed budget and then the build back budgets. So looking at the general fund first, which is page three and four, the total general fund budget is, is uh, essentially, uh, flat. It's down by seven hundred and seventy-five dollars. The assessment is down by ten thousand seven hundred and seventy-five dollars. Uh, this is a result of, uh, us, one staff cut. Uh, we, we cut one every week and that was the unfilled position that was budgeted last year. Uh, there was also some other changes. Um, I mentioned the slight increase in A D M of twenty-six students that um, based on where that A D M occurred. Uh, it includes a ten percent health insurance premium. We have not gotten the official estimate from VISBID yet, but they told us to, um, they're estimating it's going to be in the high single digits. So to be conservative, we went with ten percent. Uh, that ten percent increase just for the general fund is approximately twenty thousand dollars. Um, it includes in some increases in workman's comp, unemployment and liability insurance of approximately nine thousand dollars. An increase in audit expense of two thousand dollars. Uh, there's some new audit requirements that are coming down, uh, federally, which is resulting in an increase in our audit. And then an increase in our accounting software of thirty-five hundred dollars. Uh, we're still on the Nemrick software. Uh, we have not converted to the state software yet. Um, they increased the cost from, I think it was like seventeen hundred dollars to five thousand dollars for the year, which is still relatively cheap. Um, Infinite Camp, uh, Infinite Visions, which was the program we were on prior to Nemrick or Rutland Central was on, the cost is almost forty thousand dollars. So Nemrick is still relatively cheap. Uh, so those are the major changes in the general fund. Uh, and so if you go to page four at the bottom, uh, you can see your assessments. So Corey Valley's assessment based on the budget you have in front of you is nine hundred and fifty-one dollars, nine hundred and fifty-one thousand, um, which is a decrease of two hundred and ninety-two dollars. It covers ninety-five, uh, fifty-five point nine percent of the assessment. Well Springs F Y twenty-two assessment is two hundred and forty-five thousand, a decrease of five thousand five hundred and thirty-one dollars and covers fourteen point four one percent. Rutland Town is four hundred and sixty-four thousand, a decrease of two thousand two hundred and seventy-two dollars, which is twenty-seven point three-three percent of the budget. And then I R A is, assessment is thirty-nine thousand three hundred and fifty-seven dollars, a decrease of two thousand six hundred and eighty dollars, which is two point three one percent. So all assessments are down for the general fund. Any questions on the general fund before we move forward? Okay, so looking at
Yes, I, Louis, this is Clarence. I, um, you said the these, VISBID insurance premium is slated to go up ten thousand dollars. Is that, uh, that the insurance premium for the whole S U? Or is that just for the central office part of health insurance?
We have it estimated to increase by ten percent, which is twenty thousand dollars and that's just for the central office general fund. So it, it would be the business office, the technology department, executive administration. It's a very small piece of, so e- each budget will see that increase by ten percent. This only covers this general fund central office.
Okay, all right. So, so that's just, that's just the general fund budget. Also, um, is in this budget, is the V S B A dues?
Yes. In the general fund budget? We added the V S B A dues to the budget last year. So that is included in here.
At the, in the general fund?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so it's funded by A D M?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so moving on to the special ed budget, which starts on page five and I will go over some of the highlights that are listed on the summary of change sheet. Uh, so total, total special ed budget is again also relatively flat. Uh, total expense is up by one thousand one hundred and fifty-six dollars. The assessment is down by seventy-two thousand eight hundred and ninety-four dollars, which is three The assessment is down by $72,894, which is 3.2%. Total staffing is down based on student needs by approximately 3.66 FTE. Included in this budget is a special ed disallow estimates that are increasing by approximately $95,000. So based, what we did was we looked at what our estimates were last year, what our actuals came in at for FY20. PARA's were estimated at a 15% disallow. We increased that to 17.5%. And teachers were estimated at 5%. We left that at 5%. Related service providers, which is OT, PT, and speech, we, they were estimated at 0% and we increased at the 5% in this budget. So that total increase is $95,000. Child count, which is the December child count from last year, increased by 32 students from 282 to 314. So the total amount of students that we are serving has gone up. The actuals, if you look at some of the actuals columns for FY20, the actuals don't include any of the grant expenditures. We do budget them in the budget columns, but the actuals are accounted for in a separate fund. And then, this does include the 10% increase in health insurance premiums, which is equal to approximately $73,000. If you go to page nine, you can see the assessments and how they're affecting each of your districts. For special ed, even though the assessments are down by $73,000, not everybody's assessment is down. And that is based on the number of IEP students that you have in relation to the total number of IEP students. So if your percentage of IEP students went up more than everybody else's, then your piece of the assessment has increased. So Corey Valley is going to see an assessment decrease of $47,468. And they're currently paying 60.5% of the assessment. Wellspring's assessment is going down by $59,785. And they're paying 13.7% of the assessment. Rutland Town's assessment is going up by $39,058. They're paying 24.5% of the assessment. And if you'd like to compare these assessment pieces compared to last year, you can go to page two and you can see where, how your IEP students increased, as well as your ADM increased, and see how those percentages have changed. I know for Rutland Town, which is the one that has gone up, if you look at page two, their piece of the assessment went from 22.34 to 24.52. So approximately 2%. So they're covering approximately 2% more of the total special ed assessment. And that is due to a 14-student IEP increase. And then the last district for the assessment, IRA's special ed assessment is going down by $4,701. And they're paying approximately 1.3% of the total assessment. And then, so the next section of the bill backs, those are the last two pieces. Page 10 shows the regular ed bill backs. These positions are positions that are contracted at the SU. And that is because a portion of their salary is funded by the SU, whether it be a grant or through special ed. So there's currently five positions that fit into that category. This is, the only increases that districts will see for these positions are any increases related to insurance and salaries. But there's no new positions that are falling into these categories. There may be some shifts, but there's no new, no new positions. And then the last piece, which is page 11 and 12, this is the detail of the special ed bill backs and the disallow. And so here you can see each position that's in the building, how much we're budgeting for the disallow, and what the total disallow that you're going to be paying at your district level. And then you'll see more of this detail at your local level when we look at your local budgets.
Louis, this is Lynette. If I could just ask a quick question. I see on page 12, there's a Rutland Town teacher. She's, it's in with the shared, but that, should I take it? That should be up above with the rest of the Rutland Town?
No, she belongs, this is, it's actually an SLP. I should change that to, I can change that to shared. All of the related service providers, I put under the shared section. That one is dedicated to Rutland Town just based on the needs in that building. But based on, all of the related service providers share their time based on what the need is. So everybody should be sharing in that cost based on the, it's also based on the IEP child count numbers. So I'll just update that line to say shared.
Thank you, Louis.
Louis, on page eight, what is GoalView?
So GoalView is the software program that is used to manage all of the IEP students and their IEPs. It's also used for 504 and I believe EST. And I'll let Christine, if you wanted to give some more information?
Yeah, it's just, it is our online management service of all the IEPs are contained in that. That's how we write them. That's a state-approved.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to know exactly that is. And then, on page six, on the bottom there, it says excess cost in public. What exactly does that mean?
So excess cost public would be excess costs that we're paying to public schools. So excess cost would be anything above and beyond the normal tuition cost. So if you have an IEP student attending Mill River, we pay a regular ed tuition for that student. Let's say it's 15,000. That 15,000 gets paid by the local district as tuition cost. And then, if that student is on an IEP and receiving services like speech or para, the district will charge us separately for those items. And that's what's considered excess cost. That is different than if we have a student that goes to, say, a program at a special ed school. Like it's a, so Christine, you could explain that more than I can.
Yeah, right. Any student who's receiving special ed instruction that, you know, has high school choice and goes to another high school, we have to pay for those services. So we get a bill based on the actual services that are in the IEP, based on their cost for those services.
All right, makes sense. And then, do you know off the top of your head, what was the disallowed amount we budgeted last year?
Louis, do you have that number? I know-
I do have that number, yep, I will bring it up right now. So the budget isn't, it's an increase on the summary of changes. I've listed as a $95,000 increase. Let me just- So last year, we budgeted $358,000 in disallow. And this year, it's budgeted at $453,000.
And again, just so, you know, when we talk about disallows, it's really just the portion of staffing that is being used for general ed purposes that we cannot bill to special education. Be it recess duty, lunch duty, morning bus duty. Sometimes there's a need, a principal wants some extra support in a classroom, but it's not a special ed service. So anytime we have services that are not a special ed service that someone's performing, we have to do that as a bill back for the gen ed cost.
Yes, thank you.
So, and I think with the disallowables, what happens at the end of the year, when we get the budget, everyone is like, oh God, look what the disallowables are. That this is something, you should take this budget back to your local budgets. And as a board, discuss what you're going, what's going to be acceptable or tolerant within your buildings. And you can direct your building administrators within reason. I mean, there's always that exception. But it seems like every year, at the end of the year, when we look at, when we're at the audit or to see where we are at the end of the year, people are surprised by what that number is. And so I think it's a good idea to have that conversation now as we're building the budget, what that could look like for you as opposed to waiting and seeing what that number is at the end.
Yeah, Lisa, I think because of COVID and the shortage of teachers, it's going to be higher this year regardless of what we do.
Right. And I think we're trying, we kind of looked at like last year and next, what next year, hopefully will be a typical year to think about what that bill back should be versus. This year is going to be a real struggle. To be honest, the Wednesdays, because in the afternoon, there's not special ed services going on or special ed, you know. So we have a lot of factors that are going to affect that this year. But I do also agree, Lisa, I've encouraged principals that if they have a particular thing, they think they need a para for that's a general ed cost or things that they know can't go through the special ed budget that they think is there, they should be talking to their boards about that because that's an additional expenditure.
So we did have a PowerPoint presentation planned with some other details regarding time studies and stuff like that. But just to the time, just to move things along a little quicker, we were going to present that at the, either at the next meeting or a future meeting. If people like more detail on time studies or the disallowed, you can reach out to me or Christine and we can walk you through that more thoroughly.
Yeah, I would definitely be interested in that. I brought this up at our meeting earlier this month. And, you know, I understand the reason for the disallow and it seems to be increasing every year. And also, you know, last, last year, we budgeted just like lunch monitor positions to try and help with this. And with COVID and everything, those positions aren't filled, I would imagine. And, you know, to hear you say that this year might be worse for the disallow spending is kind of surprising. I would figure that it might actually be less.
There's more things, Eric, that are being covered that aren't special ed. The extra monitoring in the morning of students coming in, the leaving. More lunch coverage needed because students aren't in combined groups in the lunchroom. So all those things are actually adding to that. And then again, the Wednesday afternoon, you know, we have staff there all day. Services, so.
That clarifies things.
So yeah, and so we designed the special ed budget based on the staffing and receiving a certain amount of special ed revenue back from the state. And that special ed revenue is approximately 56% of the total expense. And, but only expenses that are related, directly related to students' IEPs are reimbursable. So that's how we get that 56% reimbursable. So when we budget, say, a para at 10%, or we were doing it 15% last year, so we're estimating that we're going to receive revenue from the state for 85% of that para's salary and benefits. Because only 85% of theirs total schedule is going to be spent on special ed-approved items, which is IEP work. So we're taking a shot in the dark at the beginning of the year or actually even before the year starts, based on how much of that para's time is going to be spent on IEP services. So when the year actually starts and the schedule was designed for that para, if we've budgeted 15%, but then that para's schedule is set so that 20% or 30% of their time is spent on non-IEP stuff, it means that we get less revenue from the state. So rather than, so we have two ways of handling that. One is we run a deficit in special ed and then have to do another assessment to make the special ed budget whole. Or two, we bill back the local districts based on where those staff are actually employed or working. Because those are the ones, they're the buildings that have the most control over their schedules. And to make it equitable and fair to the other districts, we're billing it directly back. Hope that throws a little bit more clarity into it. But I'm definitely willing to sit down and go over it more thoroughly.
Yeah, that generally kind of clears it up. And I know you and I talked by email back in the summer and you briefly described how the time study works and that last year, only one time study was done because of COVID, so.
No, we actually did both last year.
Oh, really?
Yeah, we did our one. We have to do one, usually we do one in October and we do one in March. And then we average it. That's what the state requires us to do, to take the regular schedules of staff. If someone has a big change in their, you know, schedule in between those times, they should submit those and then we can factor that into. But it's based on, as Louis said, what they have to do. And we go through every block of every timeframe and have to match it to an IEP service. So it is hours and hours of work that my, the admin assistant and we work on to match up. Because if we get audited, that's exactly what the state will come in and do. Is they look to say, you've got to show that this person, they're actually in an IEP. It shows there was a service that they were covering.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, are there any other questions for Christine or Louis? Hearing none, we can move on to old business. School reopening update. Did you have anything else to add, Chris?
No, that should have been off, so.
Okay. New business, class trips, field trips, fundraising. So in Corey Valley, we discussed this at our last meeting that we are essentially not allowing fundraising other than PTO and booster clubs. Class trips are completely off. And field trips, it is a conversation. At this point, we allowed a field trip from Proctor Elementary to the guards in Rutland Town for surveys. But that is a conversation between the building principal and the superintendent. So we had thought we would come and discuss this as an SU and see how other boards are feeling about that or if you've taken any action at your local boards.
At Rutland Town, we have not discussed it, but my feeling is the same as yours would have been. But we'll discuss it and probably, Chris, at the next meeting.
Sounds good, Lynette. I'll put it on the agenda.
And Wellspring's?
We haven't discussed it at all. And I would imagine that, you know, what's even sports still being up in the air that this isn't anything that'd be an issue right now.
The normal, the normal fundraising for field trips would have been going on all year in Middletown segment of Wellspring's. And without access to the building, none of that stuff has been going on. So I doubt anything that's planned at the moment, but we will have to be visiting that at our next meeting to solidify that, make sure, we'll have to amend the agenda and get it on there. We can do that at the meeting next, next Wednesday.
Okay, that sounds great. I think it's always good when we can have some level of unification on these types- I think it's always good when we can have some level of unification on these type of items across the SU. So the policy committee has been working diligently. I was not at the last policy committee meeting. So Clarence, would you like to discuss the two policies? Are these the same two policies that?
These are the same two policies that were up last time that were, are just basically for renewal, review, just being updated. And there was no change to either one of them. There are no recommended changes, if I remember correctly. And so they're just, just out for adoption this time is what these, these two are. I mean, they're pretty straightforward. They're the same policies we've had up until this point. There's, and there's no change in them. And it was just, just a place to get started to review these two. That we're still working on the, the other policies that will be coming along. The committees met a second time that we have a third, we have a third meeting set up. This is, as you might guess, two years have snuck by in a hurry and there's a whole lot of revisiting with all the new stuff to, that goes into that. It's kind of a daunting task, but we'll get there. We'll eat the elephant one bite at a time.
So we're looking for motions to adopt these two this evening, correct?
Yes.
So a, a motion would be in order for the adoption of the board member conflict of interest and the board member agenda preparation and distribution.
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
Second by Eric. All those in favor?
Hi.
All right.
Motion passes.
Hello, everyone. There was some questions in relation to the budget impact of Infinite Campus and Jump Rope and Alpine and the rest of the things related to the student information system. So in your packet is the bills for all of the various components of Infinite Campus, which includes food service, obviously all student information stuff like transcripts, keeping of the historic data over the years. And we have about 10 years worth of data in there now. Transcripts, food service, emergency management. And then, of course, it feeds all of the employee, student, staff data into all the other platforms that we use. So it's the jumping off point for their database into everything else. So the attachments kind of break down into, one says Infinite Campus Emergency Management. One says Infinite Campus Yearly. One is new, which is the component for online registration. So to allow everyone to register through the website. And then there's another one because we are using Jump Rope as the learning management system and the grading system. There's a separate Jump Rope quote and Alpine is our assessment management system. So all the assessment data from all the various assessments, MAPS, SBACK and everything from soup to nuts goes into Alpine for all the student data. Now, just to give a kind of comparison to what these things cost, because obviously they cost quite a bit. I reached, I, I reached out to our Power School rep in Vermont. We do not have any Power School products. The reason I reached out to Power School is they're the other big student information system. Having capturing throughout the country, the most districts. So Power School also is the owner of the finance module, which has been selected by the state for every single school district and school to utilize. So they made that decision on their own that's not connected to anything. And many SUs in the Rutland area and in South are transitioning to their finance product. So if you look at the Power School quote, it, it contains most of the things that Infinite Campus does, but not all. The emergency management piece is not in there. They do have their own assessment database that is included in that quote, just as a comparison. You know, that one comes to, without the emergency management, comes to 96,000. So Power School, as you can see, is more expensive than Infinite Campus. It does have a more modern appearance and it, it does have proficiency grade based grading now. So, which means that we would be able to jettison both Alpine and Jump Rope if we ever transition to that. Power School did not have a grading, proficiency based grading product four years ago when we selected Jump Rope as the proficiency based platform by committee. And the committee was composed of, it was composed of teachers, administrators, board staff, really a, a component of everybody with the exception of the student body. So really, that's it. Any questions on what anything does or any of these figures? Okay, so if.
I, I have a question on what says Infinite Campus online registration. Is that online registration for students?
Well, the registration is done by the parent. So like, say I want, I'm moving from Bennington to Rutland and I want to, you know, go to Rutland Town. I'm moving to Rutland Town today. I would be able to go to Rutland Town site and be able to start the pre-registration process and start filling out the packets online. That's what that registration.
That's something we, I, I'm just asking because this year we received paper forms for everything. And this says 7/2020. So what schools had this that they could go online and update and register?
Okay, so it was purchased in July. And with, with the understanding that that month it was being implemented, that it would, the registration packets mostly were done already for the, the fall, you know, semester for the school, fall school year. So it, it was not planning on being implemented that, that fall. It, it was something that was implemented over the summer, which we are now going to utilize going forward. And, you know, we're kind of built, we're redoing the websites. So there'll be buttons and stuff like that for registration in the future. But it wasn't really prepared for the fall of this year. It was just starting to be purchased and implemented on July 1st.
So, so this is essentially, the $6,700 is what we're paying to set it up for a year so that we can use it in the fall of next year. Or I could use, or you could use it right now. If I'm a new parent coming in, could I register online right now?
Yes. And the, the, the process of training the front staff and the building administrators has already begun. They've already been sent links to, there was a, a several hours long registration training from Infinite Campus that the front office took part in. So they got their first pass on how all the functions are going to work and everything like that.
So next, so next fall in August, no packets will go out. Everyone will be directed to this nodule on the website or for Infinite Campus to sign up, update and register your student.
That is the idea, to have a fully digital registration process, yes.
Okay. And is this going to be the same cost every year? Or once you see how many, is that based on our number of students? Because I see the number of students are different.
The $6,700 is a one-time fee for the implementation. The $7,500 will roll over year after year and be recalculated based on our number of students.
Okay.
That's how, that's how all the student information systems, that's how most software products that deal with education, it's per student or per staff member. It, it's always calculated.
Yep. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else have any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other new business from board members or agenda items for the next GRCSU meeting?
Lisa, this is Kristen. I, I don't know that this is necessarily an agenda item, but it's kind of a question for Chris too. In terms of decision-making about using some kind of remote academy, when I saw that email go out and it said the GRCSU is considering this, and I feel like, you know, I'm on the GRCSU and I didn't know we were considering that. I don't know, a heads up would be good. So maybe, I know that we're, you're just exploring things, but because of some of the, you know, interactions that happen in, in our local community, it, it would be good to sort of know some of that stuff ahead. So for future agenda items, it'd be good to have a discussion about that or at least some kind of informational session with your request.
Okay. Anything else?
Yeah, Lisa, a, a couple of things. Everyone, all the board members have been notified of the proposed resolutions that are coming to come before the School Boards Association's annual meeting for approval. And any discussion or input, anyone has anything that they're in opposition to or in favor of, they ought to voice it now because it can't, they, these things sneak up on us. In fact, is, Lisa and I at this point, I, I don't know who else is registered, will be there for discussion tomorrow, is when it actually is. So if any board members has any, has looked at any of those resolutions and has any concerns or input, now would be the time to voice it. If, if nobody has anything, they all come with a recommendation that's been pretty well vetted through different processes from the local board to a committee and back to the local boards in some cases and resubmitted. But the only thing that's, I think that's, I'm not sure quite the, the status of it now is a resolution on the, oh, waiting study that was done. And the recommendation on when that was going to be implemented. What position do they stand? There's some diverse opinions around the state. Some, some things it ought to be all instituted immediately. You know, last year was not too soon and others things that needs to be planned for a year and a half out so we have a chance to budget it. It, it's one of those things that's going to weigh on whether you're going to be a winner or a loser. And you have to look up, you know, if, if it's going to cost you money in your budget, you want a chance to budget for it. If it's going to be a windfall to your budget, well, let's do it last year, you know. Let's, let's have the money back. And it's, some of the timeframes, some of the schools in our district are winners. But when you combine it at a supervised reunion level, we're basically going to be a slight loser is what it's, of the numbers I saw. So it's probably no big, no big item for us one way or the other. It'll just, that, I think that's the only, one of the 10 or so resolutions that might be of, in direct interest to us. But the way it's filtered through the, an SU, it's not going to get to the local, local district budget immediately. So it's, it's going to take at least a year to go through. But other than that, I don't think, back when we organized in March, they elect, they elected me to do VSBA stuff to, to speak for the board. The registration came up and to, oh, you know, who's the voting delegate? Well, didn't have time to have a meeting to find out what it was. So I listed my name there and Lisa is, is the alternate. So we are listed to do that. That's how that came about. It wasn't kind of a, a thing. So that's where all that stands. And the next, the other, the other thing I had, Lisa, probably you've already taken into consideration. Do we want to have a board meeting the night before Thanksgiving?
Absolutely.
I, I, I'd be, you probably want a reason not to have to cook or get to go out to dinner that day because you were busy with a board meeting the night before. But that's a sexist remark. I take it back.
Yes, Clarence. So I don't know, like, the week before, Chriselle, if we did it the Wednesday before, is there a board meeting that week? So the third week?
All it's looking is policy committee, right?
Because I think Louis is going to want us to meet because he's going to want us to approve.
There is nothing on the 18th.
On the 18th, November 18th?
Yeah, Wednesday 18th is open.
Is that a possibility?
Was that the policy committee meeting, Chris?
No, policy's on the 11th, November 11th.
Okay, so that's a week off. That's a second Wednesday. All right.
Third Wednesday, or second, yes, yes.
Second, so the third's available.
So is the 18th a possibility? Because we, we, what we do need to do is approve the SU budget to be able to build that into local budgets. I mean, we can make it a pretty light agenda, I think. Does anyone have any objections to that? It would be nice to have a quorum to approve the SU budget. Okay, hearing none, we will, we will make it on November 18th at 6:00 PM for the SU budget. Okay. Any other new items, new business? Hearing none, a motion would be in order to move into executive session for personnel at 7:32.
Kristen Ross, move.
Okay, second?
I'll second.
Second by Eric. All right, all those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
All right.
Hi.
Hi.
Great. Thank you, everyone, for attending. And we will excuse everyone with the exception of the board and Chris.
And Lisa, could we have Lisa Madison for the part, first part, please?
Sure. Oh, and Christine Kim, I'm sorry also.
Thank you.
First part.
Good night, folks.
For Lisa Madison and Christine Kim.
Good night. Good night, everyone.
Thank you.
Lisa, did you want me as well? I can give you some more personnel-related items.
Sure.
Budget-related.
Okay, we're, we're dealing with the, with personnel contract to start with, so.
We still recording?
Hold on a second. So we still have.